Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 8th, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, yes, thanks. We have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What's council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
Your Honor, I'd like to add presentations, under presentations, for B, our county commissioners here.
All right.
I'm assuming she wants to speak.
We'll make her, uh, presentation B.
I support.
And with that, I'll move the agenda be presented as amended.
And I support that.
All right. Any discussion on the amended agenda? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Council members Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Uh, now, moving on to presentations, our first one is a very exciting one for our police department, the introduction of newly promoted police lieutenant and sergeant, uh, and our police chief, uh, Collins is here to introduce those two gentlemen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, earlier, uh, this month, we had, uh, the honor of actually having a promotion ceremony, the first time we've ever done it, and we introduced our two newest promotions to the department and to the city council. Tonight, we introduce them to the community. I'd like to have, uh, Jim Ferris come up and, uh, Dave Spellman come up. Um, I'll introduce, uh, Jim Ferris first. Jim, uh, was a patrol officer, uh, for us until, uh, early last week. Fire to him coming to us, he was a graduate of the Wayne County, uh, Police Academy. He served with the Pontiac Police Department for many years. Uh, he, uh, obtained the rank of sergeant, uh, at the Pontiac Police Department until he decided to resign his commission there and come and, uh, serve with the Ferndale Police Department. Jim, in his, well, he worked for the Pontiac Police Department, uh, was multifaceted. He worked in the quartermaster, he worked in investigations, and he worked in patrol. When he came to us, he worked in the patrol division for several years. He was the, uh, one of the ten officers that we lost in layoff in 2010. He was gone, uh, until we reinstituted, uh, a second school resource officer position when we had to tap, uh, school, uh, over on, uh, Allen Street. Uh, Jim worked in that position as a school resource officer for a couple of years. He did an outstanding job in 2013. He was named, uh, Police Officer of the Year, in fact. Uh, Jim gave up that position, went back to patrol and worked midnight for the last several years. Uh, he took the sergeant's exam very, very seriously, uh, highly competitive, uh, and came out number one, uh, on the list. We are, uh, very happy to promote, uh, Jim to this position. This is, uh, very important to us. This is the first line of defense. This is the policing of the police. This is the gentleman that makes sure that our officers do the right thing, and he answers to the gentleman standing next to him who answers to the man in the back of the room, who then answers to me. And I have to answer to her, if anybody's wondering how that all works. So, we would like to present James Ferris, Sergeant James Ferris, the newest Ferndale Police Sergeant, uh, 2016. About a year ago, uh, we had a very similar, uh, ceremony here introducing Sergeant, uh, Dave Spellman to the community. Sergeant Spellman, uh, has been with the Ferndale Police Department since 1997. He is a Ferndale, uh, he's a born and bred Ferndalian, went to Ferndale High School. He served in the, uh, Marine Corps Reserves before he came to us in 1997. He worked as a police cadet and then was promoted to the rank of police officer. Dave has done a lot of things in the patrol division. He has been a member of the honor guard. He is a member of the, uh, of, uh, evidence technician group. In fact, he coordinated that as a sergeant. Uh, he also, since he's been patrol officer, has been a field training officer. It is one of the most important jobs on the jo- on our department. He trains the new recruits to make sure they do it the Ferndale way. Dave, as a sergeant, became the coordinator of that program, so he, uh, so he has held, uh, that, uh, distinction as well. Uh, so about one year ago, uh, we, after promoting him from patrol officer to sergeant, go advance one more year, and now we are promoting him to the rank of lieutenant. Again, a very, very competitive, uh, position. He did very well, took it very seriously. Uh, Dave is, uh, is, uh, attending Ferris State still, I think, at this point, working for his, uh, for his, uh, advanced degree. Uh, Dave was also a Police Officer of the Year in 2009. And I'm very pleased to, uh, present to the community Lieutenant David Spellman. And they're open for, they're open for any technical questions that you may have, uh, for them at this time, council.
Uh, we'll let them off the hook for tonight, but congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, appreciate it.
All right, very nice. Uh, our second presentation is our county commissioner, Helene Zach, who is here to update us on all things Oakland County.
Thank you. Today is the opening of summer parks and summer jobs for, uh, residents. So if we have youth who are interested in internships, um, or young adults, you can go to Oakland County at oakgov.com/jobs. We are going to post it on the Ferndale website. Some of the jobs, there's a whole list of the Oakland County parks, such as program leader, parks helper, lifeguards, food service worker, and then the county also has jobs. Um, there are internships, like a summer criminal justice casework assistant, um, seasonal horticulture advisor, health education. There's a whole variety of different jobs. And the income, the hourly rate ranges nine dollars up, so I encourage people to apply. Um, I do want to remind people that through our Oakland County treasurer, there is taxpayer, um, assistance programs, and I know that our treasurer and his staff are conducting many individual appointments with people to arrange payment plans. So if you are in arrears, please contact the treasurer's office, and their number is 858-0611. And there are still many programs, such as the Step Forward and other programs to assess, assist people if they are falling in arrears. We don't want anybody to lose their home. Um, I do want to remind residents, I had a very sad situation of one of my constituents a couple of weeks ago that was referred to me, where they were without heat, and it was during that very cold, uh, time, and it was an elderly person, they couldn't repair their furnace, and so fortunately, you know, we were negotiating, Olshaw stepped in and could help the person replace their furnace. I, who is working with the Community Home and Improvement Department, and we do have no interest loans through our Community Home and Improvement Department, and I want to remind people, it is there, and their telephone number is 858-5402. This isn't emergency assistance, but if you are having some repair, safety issues, proactively contact them. You can apply and get a no-interest loan that won't come due until you sell your house. It's a wonderful benefit, and this is one of the services that comes from our community development block grant funding. And I know we have local funds, these are county funds. Um, I do want to, we are celebrating 50 years for Oakland County parks, and there will be many events surrounding that, so it's amazing that we have this whole community resource network of parks. Um, they are looking at moving the Oakland County Dog Park at Red Oaks closer into Royal Oak. They need that property, and they're looking at moving it a little bit closer. I know we have our own dog park here, but, you know, to have other ones available, it's part of the park system. And that's it for this evening.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions of Helene?
Thank you.
Thank you, as always. All right, next item of business would be call the audience. This is your opportunity, for those of you who are here with us today, to address council on any issue that you like that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak to those issues when we get to that portion of the agenda. So if you'd like to come up and address council on anything on your mind, come on up, give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Hi, my name's, uh, Michelle Morowski, and my address, uh, 205 West 12 Mile Road, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48073. Um, and I'm with Underwood 5 Radio. Um, I'm speaking about potentially creating a Ferndale community radio station, um, and the benefits to it, um, there are just so many, um, starting off with hyper-local programming that larger stations, um, just can't cover, um, promoting local events and music, um, and it serves, uh, the creative and artistic individuals that live here in Ferndale. Um, also specially broadcasts, such as city council meetings could be on the air. Um, and, uh, currently, uh, we hold an FCC FM low-frequency license, um, which we're very fortunate to have gotten. Um, a lot applied, and we are the only ones that have been granted one in Oakland County. Um, we did meet with the library board and received a tentative yes pending the approval of the city council on the tower and fencing, which would be located, um, next to the library. Um, and, uh, yeah, tons of benefits, um, and thank you for your time.
So, hang on.
Yes.
So, um, I know we have been in discussions with another organization that was hoping to do community-
Same thing.
Same group?
For same group.
Oh. Thought the tower was going to be at the DPW yard. That's changed.
Yes.
Okay. So you're, you're, you're familiar with her? You have contact information for her?
This information's news, we'll, we'll, I'll work with the library.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, we would love to present next month, hopefully.
Do the story, can we ask questions?
Sure.
Uh, when do we expect this to make the city council agenda? I know there was a little twist here you weren't familiar with, but-
I, I don't know. I'm going to have to look into that.
All right, secondly, I'm glad you hear you're going to cover city council, because I'm much more attractive on the radio than I am on TV. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Michelle.
No problem.
Also, I think there was a request that if she could present next month, is there any way we could?
Well, why don't we have her connect with our staff and figure out, um, what, what the next steps are?
Okay.
Yep, we're certainly, yep, we're certainly interested to, to stay in touch and find out.
Excellent. I just want to add that this would cost the city zero dollars.
Right. Music to our ears.
I like that.
That's how much we have. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Oh, good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you? My name is Tim Brennan, I live at 2605 Highland in Ferndale, and I'm here to inform the council and everyone about our upcoming concert for the Ferndale Community Concert Band. I'm taking Sharon's place-
Okay.
-this evening while she's basking in the sun in Florida.
She brought musicians with her, so-
Well, this is my first time.
Okay.
Uh, we've been in operation for less than a year, and we have a wonderful inaugural season going on right now. We're directed by Mr. Ed Quick, a former music educator in Detroit Public Schools, and we have been invited to perform in the Motor City Brass Band Festival. This festival is by invitation only. Ed sent in a recording that we'd made at our first concert, and we got accepted, so we're very proud to be able to do that. That's on April 10th of this year, in the, uh, in Dearborn at the Performing Arts Center. Our upcoming concert will be held at the High School Auditorium on February 21st at 3:00 PM. We have suggested donations of three dollars per individual, five dollars per family, and I'd like to take this opportunity to invite each one of you to attend, and citizens as well. Uh, our theme for this concert is a grand arrangement. Selections performed will include sophisticated ladies, an arrangement of Duke Ellington favorites, the Russian sailors dance by Glee Air, American Flourish by Robert W. Smith, Prelude Siciliano and Rondo by Malcolm Arnold, Salvation is Created by Chesnikov and Nimrod from the Enigma Variations by Edward Elgar. So we hope to see everyone there, and I thank you for this opportunity to present tonight.
Look forward to it, Tim, thanks. Guys do a great job. Anyone else like to address council this evening during call to audience? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless someone on council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 26, 2016. Item B is the adoption of a resolution authorizing council member Pollocka to attend the Miss- Michigan Municipal League Social Media Seminar on February 17, 2016 in Ann Arbor. Item C is the approval of the amended community development block grant application for program year 2016 with the following breakdown. Code enforcement, $62,758. Public service activity, yard services, $8,000. Public service activities battered and abused spouses, $3,000, for a total of $73,758. Item D is the approval to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the quitclaim deed vacating that, that portion of the alley behind 567 Livenoy, described as the westerly 10 feet of lots 43, 44, 45, and 46 of the Harrington Woods subdivision. Item E is the approval of the extension of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission ordinance until December 31st, 2016. Item F is the approval of Metro Act right-of-way permit extension submitted by McLeod USA Telecommunication Services. And item G is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Questions, comments? Would you like that after the motion?
Uh, after the motion, unless you're removing something.
I'm not removing something. I believe that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Move by Martin, is your support?
Support.
Supported by Leaks May. All right, now, comments and questions would be in order.
Um, on item C, uh, my first question is, it looks like, and this is the, uh, community development block grant program, uh, the code enforcement looks like it's gone up $62,000, previously from $59,758, which is a 5% bump. The dollars committed to community service, which I know we're required to give, but it's my belief that we pick the recipients, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so my question is, why didn't we adjust up 5% if that's the increase of the community service donations?
And we'll let Derek, uh, Economic Development Director, uh, answer that.
Thanks, Derek.
Good evening. In the past, we've always been capped on what we can provide community service-wise for community, uh, the community development block grants. So we've kept that amount at the same amount we've been capped with Oakland County, which I believe is, if I, if I remember correctly, is 15% of our total allotment.
Correct. With the total increase, our allotment's dropped to 13%.
Yeah, we, we could, in all, we could adjust that up by that additional 2%, we can do that, i- if council chooses.
All right.
So we, we have in the past, when we've gotten that adjustment up, when the amount that's available has been more than what we originally planned for, we've always just funneled that directly into code enforcement. But if council chooses, we can, we can easily change that and, and add that 2% to the community services area.
Okay, my second, uh, I'll go back to this in a second. I don't know if it's worthy of discussion or not, it's not that much money, but, um, the, um, the last three times this has come, I've asked for a report. I don't like putting money into programs that I don't know how they perform. And so I still don't know what $8,000 gets us. I don't know how many yards that helps, how much snow removal that helps, how many houses that impacts, and consequently, Haven used to come and present to us for the $3,000, and I have no, I'm assuming our $3,000 dumps into their general fund. I have no idea what that, what that's doing at Haven.
Okay.
So I would really like a program outcome report on these things.
Yep.
Um, so, I mean, are we paying 50 bucks a house? Is it $200 a house?
We can provide that easily.
Yeah, I want to be able to, I've asked her before, but I want to be able to evaluate if these are the right-
Yeah.
...service projects to support.
Absolutely.
Is the yard services through Olshaw?
Correct, Oakland, Oakland Livingston Health Services Agency, and we can provide that. We have, we have records on every house, and I apologize, we can prove-
That's okay. Yeah, I, I, I have no problem supporting this tonight, which is why I moved through the consent agenda, but, um, I, I'd really want outcomes on this stuff.
Easily.
You know, just so we can say, I'd like to be able to say, look, we're able to help this many houses.
Understand, we get, we'll get a report from Haven, and we can provide the information from Olshaw, uh, prior to the next council meeting.
Right, and she wants to come for 10 minutes from Haven. She used to do that all the time, I thought it was helpful.
Okay, no problem.
Um, in the meantime, I'll leave it up to council if we want to bump the services to 2%. 2%, it's not that much, it's about $400 on the, on the public service activity and a couple hundred bucks on the, uh, on the Haven. Um, but I, I'm willing to defer till, see if it goes up again next time to adjust those numbers, but I don't want to get too far away from 15%. I mean, the rest of it goes to code enforcement, so it's not like it's wasted money, but I'd just like to be consistent.
All right. It'd be helpful to, to hear the, the outcomes of those two even, perhaps, before we do-
I think that's totally acceptable. Let's wait for the outcomes, and then next year we can make a decision how we want to adjust this, depending upon where the block grant goes.
Okay. Clarification question, would you like that data, like at the next meeting, or we may bring this forward the next time?
I would like it to come, both. I would like it to come for this, for the 2015, uh, program year. I'd like to have it whenever we have that available, but I don't want this request to come to us again for 2017 without that exit report.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and with that, I'm, I'm fine with the consent agenda.
All right, other discussions, questions, comments on the consent agenda? By the public or by council? All right, it's been moved and supported. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, consent agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda, item A is a confirmation to appoint Kelly Farah to the provisional Ferndale Area District Library Board. And I see Kelly is with us, and so is the executive director of the library. Who wants to come up and say hello? Kelly, you're going to come up and say, can I come talk to us for a minute? Appreciate you willing to do this. Talk just a little bit about your interests.
Well, I've, um, been with the Friends of the Ferndale Library for about almost seven years, uh, actively working to engage the community and raise funds to support the library, and I, uh, love Ferndale, love our library. I think it's a next step for me to move up to an open seat on the library board. Would be a privilege to serve on Ferndale in this way. An honor.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions of Kelly? A motion would be in order, by the way.
I move to confirm the appointment of Kelly Farah to the provisional library board for the Ferndale Area District Library.
Support.
All right, removed and supported. Comments or additional-
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I've worked with Kelly on several projects. I'm just thrilled that you're willing to take this on. I mean, you've done fantastic work with Friends of the Library, Citizens for Fair Ferndale, you've got a great resume of community support and involvement. Um, I'm just thrilled you're willing to step into this role. I think you're going to be a huge asset, and I look forward to working with you.
I'm very excited.
Wonderful. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll? Don't go anywhere, though, hang on. I don't know how this is going to go.
You do this to everybody, they sweat, no matter.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
I don't know, yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Now, I don't want you to think I forgot, because you mentioned something to me a couple of years ago, the one thing that, because, you know, these are volunteer jobs, don't get paid to do this stuff, but there was one thing that you said that you wouldn't mind having, and I haven't forgotten, it just took me a long time to find it. So this seems like an appropriate time for wardrobe, with the official Ferndale pin. Of course.
I was formerly with the Friends, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring up, uh, this, uh, event that's happening. It's an awesome event, it's called Caddy Stacks, and that's right, nine holes of miniature golf inside the library, Sunday, February 28th.
Oh, how fun.
It's a Sunday from 1 to 4, it's, uh, $5, 12 and under is free, accompanied by an adult. There'll be a lot of summertime activities, uh, summertime refreshments, it'll be a whole lot of fun, so I encourage everybody to come.
Did you say that was 1 to 4?
1 to 4, mhm.
Very fun.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, our next item of business would be the consideration of Urban Rest Brewing Company's LLC microbrewer license, and Derek, are you introducing that, or is that a city clerk item?
Yes.
Marnie?
The Urban Rest Brewing Company is requesting council's approval for a new microbrewer license at 2615 Wolcott. Um, this is in the industrial area over, between the tracks and Hilton Road. Um, the microbrewer license is not an on-premises license, so it doesn't fall under the city's lic- your license review policy, like a lot of things, so a public hearing isn't necessary. Um, the MLCC does not require local law enforcement approval, but Detective Tholl did look over their application and, um, finds it to be suitable for the city. And Derek has been working with, um, Mr. Tepinski to, um, on the community development side of the, uh, request.
All right. Is the applicant here? There you guys are. Yeah, why don't you just come on over and just explain briefly, uh, what your plans are?
Yeah, this is, uh, I'm going to take two seconds here. This is something we're very excited about. We've been working with, uh, the Urban Rest team for quite some time, uh, to, to find a spot that's, that's suitable for them, uh, in the industrial area over by, on the Woodward Heights corridor. Um, they've worked, uh, quite extensively for about the last six months or a year, I think if not more, trying to make this a viable, uh, opportunity for both them and the city. We're very excited to have them, we think this is going to help rejuvenate the corridor. Um, they're a production brewery first, with a small taproom second, and I'll let them introduce themselves and talk a little bit about what they're going to do over there, so.
Good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
Great.
Uh, I'm Zach Tepinski, this is my wife, Mary, and our partner, uh, William Scott O'Keefe. Um, as Derek stated, we are a small microbrewery, uh, located, or looking to locate at 2615 Wolcott, um, in the Woodward Heights area, and, um, again, a small production brewery, um, with a taproom that allows us to, um, engage the community, bring in some retail sales to help, um, share the burden of the high costs of distributing our product as well, so, um, that's the gist of it.
How did you get into this business?
Um, I started in the business, uh, seven years ago. I worked in the distribution side of the, uh, right out of college, uh, for a local distributor in Oakland County called Powers Distributing, uh, who services many accounts, obviously, in the area, uh, then spent two years at a brewery out of Colorado called Oscar Blues Brewery, and was managing sales for the state of Michigan, um, for those two years, and building the project. It started as a, a table discussion, you know, between my wife, and then, uh, we met our, our partner, Scott, and he had the same types of ideas, uh, as well as, uh, great experience, and so, here we are.
Excellent. Questions or comments of council?
I have two. Um, according to the designs, it looks like there's a lot of seating, um, it's almost publish in, in, you know, the layout. Um, are you planning to serve food? Because I didn't notice any, like, food preparation areas.
No, at this time, no, we're not planning to serve any food, we just want, uh, people to be able to, to come in and sit down and sample a beer, and we will offer, uh, growler sales to go, uh, again, to help, uh, kind of share the burden of, uh, distributing kegs, and so people will want to taste it and, you know, before they make their purchase, so.
Um, and the second thing is, you're at, um, uh, Oak Ridge and, um, Wolcott, correct?
Correct.
Um, there's a parking lot between Oak Ridge and, um, Woodward Heights. Is that owned by your, your landlord?
Yes, yes.
So you, you have full use of that parking-
Correct, yes. We, uh, the space is shared with some other tenants, but, um, as far as, uh, peak hours, um, we'll have, uh, that's our parking lot.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
I have some questions.
Sure. Sure. Uh, to piggyback on what Councilman Pollocka, I know that doesn't mean I'm mad at you. I said I only call you councilman when I was mad at you. Uh, indicates there's 63 seats for tasting actually in the facility. I'm not familiar with that parking lot. Do you have capacity for 63 in the parking?
Uh, we haven't, um, I, I don't think that we've been approved for a specific number of spots, uh, at this point, um, but we want to make sure that obviously we, um, maybe Derek can speak a little more to that.
I can say the, the easy answer is yeah, by ordinance for the facility, they have enough assigned parking spaces in that lot.
Okay.
Per the city's parking code to, to open up.
Great. As part of the issue around the license, it says that, um, anyone who owns this license cannot hold any interest directly, indirectly in a wholesale or retail license, uh, either through stock ownership or any level of ownership in the business. So I'm glad to hear you've got a lot of experience there, but does that create a conflict for you anywhere?
Not at all. No.
And then, um, how many barrels do you plan on producing a year?
Um, our first year, we plan on producing 350 barrels.
Oh, okay. So, and do you have any other locations currently?
No, sir.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
Just real quickly, we, just, just real quickly, as staff, that we'd like to point out, this building is a, a functionally obsolete building, um, as declared by Oakland County. The applicant and the current developer have worked with us to sprinkle the facility, which has made the fire department, I think, extremely happy with the new location. Um, and the building is already showing significant signs of improvement, both from urban rest involvement and the current developer trying to locate new businesses in there. So we think this is a, much the same way that Valentine's and Trey M's and V Nectar has been, uh, uh, good businesses for the city. We see this as continuing in that same vein.
It's a good-looking building.
It is. Yeah.
To the chair?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say, I think, um, this type of businesses is following along our trend in Ferndale to be, um, especially, um, craft alcohol makers as well as fresh food with Garden Fresh, um, and other, um, entrepreneurs in this, in this, uh, food industry. So I think, um, this fits with what we're trying to cultivate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in our, in the, in this district. And we're also looking at this area as too, as part of our master land use plan, um, something too akin to an innovation district. So I think this really, really fits. That's all.
All right. Uh, motion would be in order.
I move that we recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval of the request from Urban Rest Brewing Company LLC for a new microbrewer license to be located at 2615 Wolcott, Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, any additional questions or comments, either from council or anyone in the audience?
Welcome to Ferndale.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Poulter?
Yes. Thank you. That is adopted. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Much success to you. Our next item of business would be a consideration of a public lodging house license for the Motorama Hotel. And Dan, are you going to introduce that item?
Mayor, I'd be happy to. Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. As on your agenda this evening, uh, is a issue with respect to consideration of a application for a hotel license, uh, by Motorama Hotel. Under the city's Code of Ordinances, uh, Chapter 7, Article, uh, 7, uh, hotels, motels, and other multi-dwelling, uh, premises in the city of Ferndale are required to have a, a license. Uh, in connection with that, the applicant, the owner of, uh, Motorama Hotel, made application for a license in December of last year. Uh, under the ordinance, the police chief is charged with, uh, undertaking an investigation of the establishment as to whether or not it, uh, deems it to be an appropriate, uh, business owner, uh, for that particular type of activity. In connection with the investigation also, uh, there is a inspection that's undertaken by the, uh, building official and the fire marshal. Uh, included within your materials, uh, this evening is a report, uh, from the police chief who identifies a host of issues and concerns that he has, uh, with respect to the establishment, uh, along with, uh, submittals and correspondence that, uh, were prepared by the building official and fire marshal outlining, uh, current code violations that , uh, they, uh, deemed present at the particular establishment. The applicant has been provided, uh, notice, uh, that this particular matter was going to be on council's agenda this evening. Uh, I, I'm not sure whether there's a representative of the applicant here in the audience, but, but, uh, both, uh, certified, regular, and personal, uh, delivery of the, of the notice that this was going to be on council's agenda was provided. Uh, I believe the chief is going to provide some additional, uh, information with respect to his recommendation. I think at the conclusion of his, uh, of his report, uh, to the extent that there is a representative of the app, of the applicant here, uh, council may wish to, to allow them to speak, uh, and then, uh, there is a proposed resolution, uh, in your material this evening.
Chief?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this, uh, this process began some time ago, uh, after we, um, we began to require the license to be, uh, activated. Uh, I spoke with, uh, my detectives, my narcotics officers, uh, patrol officers as well. Uh, we made a, uh, list of all the, uh, we made a, a three-year, uh, study of the calls for services that we've had at this motel as well as some of the, uh, more egregious incidents that have occurred there over the last three years. I've prepared a document that I, that you've been, um, given that, uh, kind of highlights several of them. I can go through several of the more, uh, interesting ones on that list if you would like, but, uh, notwithstanding that we've had, uh, incidents of human trafficking, we've had incidents of drug abuse, drug sales, uh, threats with guns, threats with weapons, uh, we've had overdoses causing death that, uh, that have occurred on those premises. We've had in 2013, a total of 103 calls for services that we, that the police have responded to those there in a year's time. 2014, it was a very similar number, 101. Last year, in 2015, it was a total of 161. So it was almost a one-third jump in the number of times that we've gone to that establishment. Uh, in contrast, I would like to point out that Ferndale High School houses 1,100 students on a daily basis there. We have 130 runs in 2013, 129 runs to the high school in 2014, 175 runs to the high school in 2015. Uh, we have a police officer that is posted at the Ferndale High School because of the fact that we have, uh, that's probably the largest concentration of human beings that we have in this community at any one time. We have an officer that's posted there because it's that, that we have, first, it's our children and second, it's that much type of activity that we have to go through. Of course, they're not drug overdoses and things of that nature, but they are things that we, that will take up an officer's time. It becomes a nuisance, uh, to have to repeatedly go to the same location over and over and over again. Um, so I was part of the investigative process as we went through the inspections with the building department and the fire department with the fire marshal. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the state of the building and the, uh, the fire violations were, I mean, it, it appeared nobody cared. I mean, there was, there, uh, were cracked, uh, toilets, there were, um, uh, fire alarms that didn't work, gasoline being stored in storage, uh, uh, facilities that were right next to rooms. They have, uh, the building department would be better to, to tell you about this, but they had apparently the catwalk that is on the, the second floor has been, or has had a repour of concrete on a metal, uh, uh, structure that, uh, uh, nobody's done any type of engineering study or submitted anything that says that that can, uh, bear that load. And in addition to that, it raised the, uh, level to the door jams about two and a half inches. So now there's, you know, there's a bump to go out of the room, uh, which could be a hazard in the case of a fire. And one of the rooms that we did have a fire just recently, it has not been, uh, the, the room has not been, uh, uh, put back into usable, it's just been left as a burned room. Um, there were rooms that were, uh, longtime residents, have been there for years or plus that's been used as an apartment building, more so than a, uh, lodging house that is typically for a, uh, overnight or, uh, week stay, things of that nature. Uh, that's not how that, uh, facility's being, uh, being utilized. So, um, after looking at our time spent there, uh, the type of, uh, organization that is going on inside the building, I could, could not in good conscience, uh, say that, uh, I would issue a license once that, uh, it's been explained to me what that, uh, my responsibility is for, uh, this particular ordinance. I can answer any questions you may have about this.
So hang on. Um, so I don't know, Fire Chief Sullivan, if you, I mean, I know there were fire-related issues here. I don't know, you want to speak to those or that was, I know that was probably the fire marshal, so I don't know if you're versed to speak to those. Okay. Um, so before I ask coun- I'm sorry. Oh, no. So before I ask council if they have any questions, uh, of you, chief, I'd like to give anyone who's here from the, in the audience, an opportunity to ask questions. And maybe first we'll start with by asking the question, is there a representative of Motorama Motel here with us this evening? Okay. Don't see anybody. Uh, but is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the Motorama property this evening, um, before we get, yeah, come on, come on up and give us your name, um, and your address and, uh, let us know what's on your mind and we'll do the, we'll do the public portion of this first and then we'll, then we'll open it up to council. Thanks. Good evening. Hi. My name is Mary McKenna and I live at, uh, 330 West Hazelhurst. I own 166168, uh, West Bennett, which is right across the street from Motorama. And I've owned that property for about, uh, 23 years. Um, during that time, I have not been able to rent to single, uh, young females. I will rent to an older female who knows about it. But, uh, you know, so it's, it stopped some potential rentals. Um, there's also been numerous occasions where, um, people will come out onto the balcony and, um, expose themselves while I've been working on my house. Um, the neigh- the neighborhood has a lot of rats and we're not sure where they're coming from, but that could be a potential source. We also had our rental property on the market to sell and all of the, um, potential people who came to look at it, one of their comments was, "We don't want to own a property across the street from this motel." So, you know, um, it is detrimental to the Ferndale community and its reputation as a whole, I believe. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Mary, tell about selling the place.
I just did. I told him. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name's Everett Kaiser. I live at 230 St. Louis. Uh, I'm also the chairman of the Dales Neighborhood Organization, which the, the Motorama is kind of within our boundaries. And as sad as I am to see, uh, a, a long-time business struggle and, uh, potentially have to leave our neighborhood, um, I, I don't think too many people will be sad to see, uh, the Motorama leave if it comes to that. Um, we would be much happier if they would improve and, uh, make it an asset to our neighborhood, but in its current state, uh, it really is not. And it, it has not been for a long time. Uh, I want to thank Chief Collins and, uh, the building department for looking into the, the study and, uh, Attorney Crist for, uh, looking into the legal matters of, of the issue. And we really appreciate your, your consideration and, you know, I think, uh, this could only make our neighborhood better. Thank you.
Thanks, Everett. Good evening.
My na- hi. My name's Ann Gal. We're going to just moved to Ferndale, uh, bought a house on the south side on Pearson Street. Um, my taxes have increased and if, honestly, if I would have known about the Motorama, I would not have bought south of Nine Mile. I think you're going to deter, uh, people with money buying new houses. Um, they don't want to, I, I guess I relocated out of state, so I didn't know the neighborhood very well. My real estate agent didn't tell me, but I think you're going to have what you have the south side. I know you want to get rid of a lot of the rentals and have more people putting money into those areas, but when you've got a place like that, you're going to probably deter more people from moving into that area. So I was kind of a little disappointed when I moved there. So, um, I think there's a motel next to it as well. So if you close that down, then unfortunately, how they say, the rats just moved to the, to the other one. So I don't know. Hopefully, hopefully the police will, uh, investigate the other motel as well and keep us informed and I appreciate the job that they're doing.
Thank you.
Hi, council. Jeff Bennett at 231 Jewell Street. I just want to say down on that corner, I've lived down near there for about 10 years now, and we're really seeing that corner and that area really come around. Hodge's Subaru, as you know, have moved down there and really bringing that business back. We, uh, just feel that that Motorama Hotel down there is really kind of a, just a site that needs to go. And I think you have that underscored here in the fact that the property owner isn't even here to, to defend himself. Uh, I think not only does the, is it a sore, eyesore for the community, especially at a place that kind of is the beginning of our community, but it also breeds other crime and supports that not only are the police having to go there, but it's also creating other crime within the area with bikes being stolen or, or other property damage done. So I think this is really a slam dunk for the city council to really move on this. And then not only if you deny it and it shuts, but then to move quickly and maybe find or, you know, really try and find a new tenant to come in or a new property owner to move quickly and develop it, that into something else. I think, again, we're really seeing on that end, not only with, uh, what's happening with Subaru, but also with the Meyer over there, that that whole southern end of Ferndale is really starting to come up. And I think this is the time to really move ahead here and, uh, make some action on this hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Perot. I live at 202 West Bennett. So they're my beautiful neighbors across the street. Um, my property values are going down, taxes keep going up, but if I go to sell, that's not the case. I live next door to the first lady that came up here that owns that property and they had to sign out there for an awful long time, could not sell their property for a hundred thousand. That's horrible. Um, I've called on the Motorama tenants, people that live there. There's people that have lived there for very long periods of time, uh, not just overnight or for a week. I can see all the action. We're getting people parking on my street in front of my house and the houses from the corner, I'm the second house off the corner, um, first, second, third houses. We're seeing people park there and go into the motel. And why is that? Because they don't want to be on camera for their, uh, the Motorama's parking lot, I assume. So that you've got to figure they're up to no good. And they look like shady characters. The cars are pretty bad shape. They look like, you know, they're up to no good. Hoods up, you know, sneaking around, looking around. It's scary. But I'll tell you one thing, thank God, we have the beautiful police officers that we have, because anytime I've called and I go, "God, I'm calling again," I feel like they're like, "Don't worry about it. We're here to serve you." How many have said that to me? And it just touches my heart. I pray for them all the time because they're putting their lights on the line. This is ridiculous. You see the, the counts that are against this motel. And like that gentleman said, they're not even here to represent themselves. It, it's time to go. I think with all the car dealerships moving down that way and building up, that'd be a nice spot for a car dealership to go in. That's it.
Thank you.
Evening, council, residents. Uh, my name's Jordan Towery with the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. And, uh, honestly, your residents and your police department have said it best. Um, we are really proud of you guys for stepping up and taking action on this. Uh, it doesn't embody what's going on in your community, doesn't embody what's going on in the corridor, the corner that Eight Mile's turning. Uh, and I mean, I, again, I have no reason to echo what, uh, your residents and police have said. We're really proud of you guys for stepping up. is, you know, people are saying, "Well, demolish it," or, you know, "At least kick the tenants out." A vacant building or a vacant parking lot is not going to be any better. People are still going to sell drugs. They're still going to, things are going to happen in a vacant lot, the same way that they would happen in a bad motel. So my biggest concern is what's going to go there if it's not there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, I will open it up to Council's questions and comments. Councilman Martin.
Chief Collins, in your memo, you indicated that there were, of the instances of crime, which I agree there are no horrid numbers, but you indicated that some were due to normal hotel operations and some were due to things that the motel should have been able to control. Can you, I understand that from the building inspection perspective. That's clearly on the, on the side of the landlord. But with regards to the crime report, can you give us an example of what sorts of things you feel are under the control of the motel versus normal motel operations?
Well, if you have normal hotel operations, you are going to have, just by the virtue of the fact that they're a hotel or a motel, you're going to have certain types of activities that will cause the police to come, even if it's just something as simple as they lock their keys in their car or they have, you know, they have some type of activity that the police would normally respond to. Those things, I would not hold against any normal businesses, just like when we look at the alcohol establishments and we go to Rosie's because somebody had a wallet stolen. That doesn't go against the bar owner because somebody was a victim of a theft there. This, very similarly, we wouldn't hold certain normal responses or calls for service to a hotel. You could, you can't control some type of activities. However, if you are the hotel owner and you have an individual that has, somebody that comes to their, has visitors to their room over and over and over again, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that something may be going on there. Additionally, and we're not getting those calls. We're not getting the calls that says, "Hey, I have this person. They've been staying here a week. They've been staying here a couple of nights, and they keep have repetitive visitation to the same room." We're not getting those type of calls. When do we get the calls? We get the calls when the two individuals that have been in there, if you look at some of the synopses, they've been there for several days, and then there's a brouhaha that gets, that starts and they fight. We don't get that call either, but when they can't control the fight anymore, they call us to escort people off the premises. So those are the type of things, or that's just a handful of examples of the things that they can by following the rules, working with the police. Now, I will say that when they are called, when we are called, rather, they are generally helpful. They don't, they're not obstructionist. They don't refuse to cooperate with us. They provide video when we request video. To be fair, we have to give them that type of statement, but on the other hand, they really don't care who or what or what goes on in their business as far as we can tell because we are there at the very south end of any type of calls. We're not there when they can recognize that there may be trouble brewing. We generally get called when the trouble has already happened and we come to clean up the mess.
Thank you. I appreciate the differentiation. Secondly, on the correction order, there was a deadline for the smoke alarms repairs of January fourteenth, 2016, at 2:00 p.m. Did anyone know if they met that deadline? Has there been a reinspection?
I know he went back over, but I don't know what the answer to the question, if they've got everything. They had some.
I do, I do believe on the smoke detectors that all occupied rooms, that the fire marshal did go back and established that the occupied rooms did have workable smoke detectors within that allotted time period. I believe that they did make a couple of the tenants that were long, very long-term tenants move out of some of the rooms, that there was a bit of hoarding that was going on, fire hazard because of it, and they did require them to move out of a couple of rooms into one that was not stuffed with belongings.
All right. Thank you. I'm fine.
I have a question for you, Dan, and that is, just talk us through the process of what happens tonight.
Certainly, Mayor.
If you don't recommend the license.
Well, there is a recommendation from the police chief in conjunct, you know, coupled with the reports from the fire marshal and the building official recommending denial. That's Council's call on that. To the extent that Council determines that based on the material that's included within the chief's report, that there is cause, based on the ordinance, to determine that there's a problem associated with that, that it's not an appropriate business, the business isn't being conducted in a proper manner, and there's cause based on the report to find that, you can move to deny the license. Should Council do that, the applicant would be provided notice of that decision by Council and would have an opportunity under the ordinance to have a, to request a hearing, a more detailed opportunity to address the material that's embodied within the chief's report. So that would be the next step. Additionally, there are, like in the chief's report, there are individuals who have lived in the premises for an extended period of time. Should Council deny the license, the intent of the city is not to evict them immediately. There is going to be that period of time of notice to the applicant of the decision of Council, and then it really puts it in the applicant's court. And if the applicant doesn't respond or doesn't voluntarily elect to close, then the city will have another decision to proceed forward to demand injunctive relief and seek an order to that effect.
But you could envision that the owner, if they were not successful in the appeals hearing, would probably seek some kind of legal repress, right? So this is something that's likely then to be moved into the courts and--
Well, it's hard to predict, Mayor, but certainly it's possible that that could happen. I mean, it was possible that the applicant appear here tonight, too. So I anticipated that there would be a representative from the applicant here. So that's certainly an option, and certainly the city has the option to go to court to attempt to accelerate it should the applicant disregard what Council may elect to act upon.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just we, we would like to, on the same vein, when we did do this inspection, we did have the social agencies on standby in case that we came across life and safety issues that we felt that the Building Department would have to close the establishment down. So, and we worked very well with the county and the state agencies, so we had them all spooled up. So if we had to move them out, we had a plan in action. We have no intention of taking the folks that live there, particularly the long-term folks, and throwing them out or forcing them out. We will, like the city attorney has said, we will work with those agencies to make sure that we can do whatever we can do to help place anybody that is there long-term.
I appreciate hearing that because there are going to be people there that are innocent victims of this as well, that live there, and so--
Right. We have no intention of throwing anybody to the curb. We want to make sure that we do this right and we do this in their best interests as well.
The questions or comments to the chief or to Dan? Of Council?
According to the ordinance, the applicant or the owner has five days from notice. Does the five-day's notice start today?
No, it'll, well, it'll be upon the receipt of written notice, which will--
Okay. It's not on the notice that they've already received?
They've already received written notice. No, should Council, Council's going to take some type of action tonight, and if the action is to deny the license, they're going to get an additional notice tomorrow, in which starts a five-day period for them to ask for a hearing.
Okay.
To ask for a hearing.
Okay, to ask for a hearing.
And that hearing is back here at Council?
It would be before Council. It would be at a special meeting.
Okay.
And just in comparison, unlike the liquor license law, there is no state agency here that would be part of this process. It's just local.
That's correct. This is a local ordinance. There is no administrative agency that would supervise that appeal.
Attorney Chris, is there, as far as the licenses, this is just really a, the license is really a renewal. This is something that they've been able to get, and if it's voted on tonight, let it not be renewed, did you say how soon that goes into effect as far as, is there an expiration or what's the--
Well, they would not have a license, but as I indicated, there is a opportunity for them to ask for a hearing. So the effect of the denial is not going to be immediate. They're going to have that window with which to ask for a hearing before this council, and then, as the chief indicated, there's going to be a transition period should there be a decision of council to deny the license, to make sure that occupants have an opportunity to move, a relative, a reasonable period of time to move. And that, the details of that mechanics has not been worked out yet.
But if they don't appeal within the five days of the notice, they're done.
They're done, but yes, they're going to be done, and then there is the issue with the occupants and how long the city's going to try and work with them to try and relocate them.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'd like to talk a little bit about one of the residents' concerns regarding building vacancy. So while this type of unsavory occurrences there are not wanted, neither is a long-term closed-up vacant property. Can you talk a little bit, April or Derek, regarding the process in which the city would be providing support to the property owner in the event that this business closes? Because he has an option to sell or repurpose that space for a new type of business, correct?
Did you say the city?
No.
The, 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 the property owner, I'm assuming, is this business owner?
That might be a good question for Derek. What's the likelihood of a development at this site and, based on just your knowledge of what folks are looking for in this area and in that area in particular?
I think it's very likely, should a use or the hotel use cease to exist there, that we would get several inquiries in short notice. The entire corridor, I think it was noticed earlier or mentioned earlier with the development of the Meyer's site across the street, some of the other stuff, the potential for transit along Woodward, does make this a very attractive intersection as well. So we think if this were to cease operation and the hotel use stop, the site is owned commercial, C2, so we think we would see a request for some type of commercial operation, probably in short order.
Do we know what the assessed value of this property is?
I do not off the top of my head.
Sure, I should ask.
That's fine.
And what, and then, interestingly, then, what the, what we think the potential value of that property could be because this, I mean--
We can certainly find out. We could do a comparative study and give you the existing assessed value, and then also what other light commercial properties along the corridor are going for currently.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Other, other comments or questions?
I have comments, but I don't know if I'm, we're going to wait for comments till after we make a motion or--
Oh, yeah, there has not been a motion, so that a motion is appropriate at any time.
I would move that this council finds substantial cause to adopt the Ferndale Police Chief's recommendation, denying a license to the Motorama Hotel under Section 7-152A, it appearing that the applicant is not a suitable person to conduct or maintain the business of running such establishment and to provide written notice of the denial to the applicant.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polica. Continuing with the discussion.
I never want to be someone who forces a business out of our community. I don't think any of us, in my opinion, I don't think any of us are elected to do that. However, I believe that we're elected to ensure the, in part, ensure the safety of our community, ensure the safety of people coming into our community. And based on this war and peace laundry list of issues, I have great concern over the responsibility of the people managing and/or owning this facility. I think what really topped it off for me, though, was when over twenty smoke alarms were missing in rooms and twenty more were missing batteries. To me, that is though the value of a life is worth the cost of a battery. I mean, seriously, that's, to me, it's completely unacceptable. That's all I have to say.
I have a comment if I may. I fully support taking this thing out. I think, and I'm sorry, those are crass words, but this is just how I feel about it. I've heard the argument, "Well, they provide a service. It's low-income housing, really, at its basis form." And recently, I've had a lot of experience with low-income housing, and guess what? Even low-income housing needs to have the opportunity to be safe, to be habitable, and to have a smoke detector, for God's sake. You know, I don't think that by his, her, I really don't know, actions, they demonstrate any care for these guests. They do not demonstrate any care for Ferndale. They are not a community partner. They are not a good neighbor, as we like to pull out with our logo, as a well-deserved motto, I think. There's no place for this in Ferndale. And so it's long overdue. We should do what we can to help transition the residents, but I really am out of patience with this owner. Say.
Yes, please.
Well, after reading the police reports and all of the violations and things that are going on, and the incidents at this motel, I think what, and I knew how I felt about that. I wasn't pleased hearing about that, but I think what really topped it off for me is the residents coming forward and speaking with how it's affecting their properties and how they feel about their safety. And I just think that, you know, Ferndale is just really a great place to live, a place where you can raise your families, a place where you should be able to feel comfortable, and a place where you could, and, you know, your property is your investment, and you should be able to bank on that investment.
It's not so much that way by me.
Okay.
I wish it was.
Okay. But I just think that this has become, I've heard more about this, and I've heard from residents even outside of this meeting. And I think that this is just, I think we, this property, this area is growing in property and is growing in value, and I just think that there are more things that can be done with that property, and I care more about the safety of the residents.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Everett Kaiser to come up and represent the Dale's Neighborhood Group. This has been an item on focus for the group to improve the Eight Mile corridor that borders our neighborhood. The parks were a great step, but we need to go a step further and really focus on redeveloping this corner into something that is beautiful and integrated into our community and definitely that protects the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. So with that in mind, you know, I'm probably going to vote in favor for closing Motorama for now or denying their license. I think it's the right thing to do, and they have some time to make addresses to improve the property.
I guess I would just add, you know, none of us thought that this was a church, okay?
What?
So we understood that this was a low-rent hotel motel that's been operating there for a long time, but first got my attention was the death on the lawn of a neighbor last year, which is unacceptable and ridiculous that that's happening in our community. But to see the laundry list of very serious offenses that have been going on there, a hundred and sixty-one calls to that location, it's an insult to all the business owners in this city who do the right thing and play by the rules and make sure that they work with our police department to make sure that their customers and their visitors are safe. This, I agree with Justin, or, I mean, sorry, with Jordan, when he said, I said that last time, too, didn't I? I agree with Jordan when he said, "This doesn't, this doesn't represent what the corridor is about. This doesn't represent what Ferndale was about, and I'm embarrassed that the residents have had to put up with this for as long as you have." And so I'm sorry that the owner isn't here tonight, but I think you should give him the opportunity to come back for a more detailed hearing before this council. I'd very much like to hear their side of the story and hear what they wanted us to know and that they didn't feel they could tell us tonight. And so I'm certainly in favor of denying the license and asking them to come back for an appeals hearing if they so choose. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Do we need a motion?
We have one. Moved by Martin and supported by Polica.
Sorry. Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Lee Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The license is denied. Moving on now to the final item, which is Item D, Discussion of Councilmember Liaison Responsibilities to City Boards and Commissions. And a couple of us, I think, Dan in particular, had asked that in addition to the charter-mandated positions that we all hold, there's a number of other ones that we've created, and we ought to sort of take a look at those in one place and adopt those. So I believe that's what staff has done for us this evening, right? We're still in meeting, folks. Thanks. So I'm not sure-- And a couple of us, I think, Dan in particular, had asked that in addition to the charter-mandated positions that we all hold, there's a number of other ones that we've created and we ought to sort of take a look at those in one place and, and adopt those. So, um, I believe that's what staff has done for us this evening, right? We're still in meeting, folks. Thanks. Uh, so I'm not sure who's introducing this item, but Dan, do you want to speak to it? You asked for...
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
And I, I think Marnie probably put it together for us.
Sure. We've never really officially, we've had council liaison roles and it's not, um, like, uh, you know, the, the formal appointments, but I just wanted to put a, kind of a structured conversation around this. I don't think, my perception is, any of us that are assigned as a liaison necessarily want to move off theirs, but there are commissions that fall through the cracks. The Beautification Commission, very unclear who that liaison is and I think we owe, they, you know, they're here every month, they do great work, I think we owe them, uh, the attention to assign a council liaison to them. Um, I think Greg is informally or maybe formally acting as the historic commission's, uh, uh, council liaison, I think that's our role, but again, not a formal city organization, but we should maintain that connectivity, whatever that looks like. Um, I would argue for the Ferndale Community Foundation, but half the officers are council members, so I'd be less concerned about that one. Um, and I guess that's probably the extent of my list and then as well as, I, I, assuming if my assumption is right, if, if we're all comfortable continuing to serve as the liaisons where we do, I don't want to take that for granted, although that's my assumption. So I just, I wanted to have that discussion, nothing here needs a vote, but let's just make sure we got all the committees and commissions we want to cover, are covered and, um, you know, and you guys' thoughts on it, I'd love to have that conversation.
Um, one of my thoughts is, I agree with you and I, I appreciate it, we should probably include this in our organization meeting each year and just have this on it, even if they're not charter-approved. It's, it's helpful for us as we're sorting out our responsibilities for the year. The one I might disagree with you on is, um, the, the rest of the, the groups that we have here and the ones that we tend to be liaisons to are groups that the, the city council has formed and organized, they typically act as advisors to the council, FESC is another one, but I think we just did that one last before, is the only reason it's not on this one, is they probably didn't...
It should.
It's environmental.
They're coming down.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is, yes. So, these are groups that the, the council has, uh, created, uh, is seeking input for and it makes sense. Um, when you, when you branch beyond those, there's a whole host of sort of nonprofit organizations in town that we didn't create, that we don't have any formal or sort of even informal responsibility for.
Correct.
So I'd be hesitant for us to start going down that path. And so, the only reason is, although I love them, I, I think the Historical Society, for instance, that is a separate 501(c)(3) independent organization.
I'm cool with that, that's fine.
Uh, we're their landlord, but other than that, I mean, uh, so I'd be a little nervous to go down that path, but otherwise, it, it does bring up the question of the Beautification Committee, but I, which I think...
That's ours.
Is ours, right? And so, we ha- we don't have a liaison to that one presently and we should.
I can be that.
I didn't want to look at you too, straight from the...
I can feel your eyes burning.
Right, right. Um, but I want to, I want to applaud you for bringing this forward, because it's helpful to just sort of state this so that they know, so that everybody's clear.
Right.
Uh, um, that we're there and we're, uh, there to assist them. I know there's other thoughts or comments about that, Ed, and thank you very much. It's a great group of people.
It is, yeah.
Um, if, if I recall, we still don't have, um, MML, right? When we become MML board members, we have to appoint a city council, um, person to vote at their meetings, if I recall? And, um, so it's not by charter and it's not by commission, it's by membership, so how do, but SEMCOG, um, our membership to SEMCOG, we vote for a liaison to that, so how does MML fit into this picture?
Um, wasn't, wasn't that on the list in the organization?
Correct, but we've appointed Melanie and she's now a board member.
Oh, so we would, we would have to revisit that then?
I think we need to revisit that, yeah.
We'll have them take a look at how to do that, so that it's kosher.
I think the critical piece of that is at the conferences, right? That's where the voting occurs.
Yes.
We'll bring that back on the next meeting then for a vote on who the new rep for the MML would be.
I mean, it makes sense for me to be it, but...
I would hope that...
Right, because I'm lying to them?
That we're allowing for that.
But, um, I just want to make sure.
But if we could take a look at, um, if you, through the chair, uh, if there is a conflict with you being an MML board, if there, if we, if that, maybe you are it by proxy?
Yeah, so if you can...
So I will, I can follow up with, uh, the MML if you'd like.
Yes, please, please do.
Again.
So no motion is required on this, right? This is just for council information?
Communication and clarity.
Thank you, Dan, for bringing that forward. All right, moving on now to call the audience, I'm sorry, to call the, uh, council and we'll start with the police chief. Chief Collins, anything else to go to the community?
I'll be further this evening, thank you.
All right, so, Jill, anything from the Recreation Department this evening?
Um, just one quick announcement, um, this past Tuesday started AARP Tax Aid at the Kulik Center, um, is running now through April 12th, every Tuesday, um, for seniors age of sixty and over. They take the first twenty-five folks that, um, come to the Kulik Center, it's first come, first served, starting at ten AM. Our doors open at nine-thirty, um, I encourage folks to get there a little bit early, um, because we do have, have a line starting in the morning. Um, for information on what you need to bring to that appointment, um, you can find that on AARP.org. Thank you.
And just on that point, and you're, you're good, Joe, but if you're not a senior, but you're a low-income resident who would like assistance with your taxes, Accounting Aid Society right here on Hilton Road in Ferndale is a wonderful organization that will do your, your taxes on a sliding scale all the way down to zero or, uh, whatever your income permits. So if you're a resident who, um, wants some assistance with your taxes, but you're not a senior and can't make the Tuesday, uh, I highly recommend Accounting Aid Society over on Hilton Road. Uh, Jenny, anything from the HR Department this evening?
Good evening. Um, as we promised last year when we started our employee, uh, our employer-sponsored Health and Wellness Center, um, we promised council that we'd come back with some really great data to support our, our program's success in its first year. We're in the process of, um, gathering that data, we have a meeting later in March, um, with our, uh, Care Here team to deliver that information and we'll be preparing a report to council for that. In addition to that, we're planning an internal employee wellness initiative, partnering with Madison Heights and Royal Oak to participate in their, uh, walk or run for the health of it, um, five K, which is scheduled for April eighteenth, I believe. Um, we are coordinating an internal team and Madison Heights and Royal Oak is also doing that, full of our employees, um, and kind of a, some competition there, so, um, we'll be sending that information out to staff, but doing some additional wellness initiatives, um, amongst that team as well beyond our clinic itself.
Is council invited to part?
They absolutely can. More information to come.
Hey. Thank you, thank you Jenny. Uh, Derek, anything from Economic Development this evening?
Nothing.
Nothing else, all right. Chief Sullivan, anything from the Fire Department this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm happy to announce as a part of the Oakway, we are looking at, um, the Affordable Care Act and how it's affecting EMS in the country. So we've sent a couple people out to, uh, Pinnacle, which is a, uh, seminar on this and, um, one of the decisions made within the Oakway was that we need to have a, uh, data research on the quality of EMS we're putting out there. So we did it as an Oakway group, we established a contract with EMS, uh, survey team and, um, after, starting in at the end of last year, we finally got enough data into the system that this is our first, um, comparable data that we can compare both to the, uh, seven other cities of the Oakway and nationally for the size jurisdictions we represent. Um, just really quickly, it, it looks really good for us, although the number twenty-one on the first page, usually like to have thirty or more in response, but we're small. So for the period of January, these are the, uh, pure data comeback, uh, responses. Everything's controlled by HIPAA, nothing is, is presented, these are questionnaires that are sent out to these people and then they give us a rating. So if you go through it, uh, we rate it pretty high, we have a few areas, apparently a comfort of our ambulance and possibly cleanliness of the ambulance, we're not sure exactly what those responses mean, but we will definitely take a look and this is going to guide us into the future of what we're doing and are we doing it well? So I know the council likes data and, uh, I'm sorry, it didn't get on the agenda as a regular presentation, but, uh, Captain Toyte just pulled this off of the data collection site, uh, about five o'clock, so we printed it up and decided to give it to council.
This is excellent data, thank you chief. Comfort of the ride, not so high, cleanliness, everything else off the charts, so...
Yeah, we're, we're doing really well, other than comfort of the ride, which we're working on updating the ambulance.
Yeah, I have to the chair, is that my question? Yeah, I'm not sure how comfort of the, this is a side note, not my question, I'm not sure if you need an ambulance, comfort of the ride is ever going to be high?
Yeah, I agree, councilman.
Unless you're picking me up in an Escalade with a couch in the back, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Um, years ago, you brought back, and I found this really valuable, um, and I would really love to see more reports from our ambulance billing office services.
Okay.
Specifically, what's our delinquency rate? Um, what's our pay rate or time from the insurance companies that we bill directly? And the cash pays, what does that look like? I'd love to know what our, uh, kind of debt we're carrying in relation to this service is.
Okay, I know it's, it's not high, but, uh, Captain Toyte takes care of all that through AccuMed, but I will definitely...
Yeah, no, you had some great data a few years ago, I'd just love to see it again, just to see how they're doing.
Not a problem.
Thank you. This is great data.
Yeah, good stuff, thanks chief.
Actually, through the chair?
Yes.
I have something unrelated to ask the chief.
To ask the chair.
Um, I've had some residents ask, um, what can people do with expired or old fire extinguishers?
Uh, I think SACRA has a, a program, but I don't think they take them pressurized. So you have to find a way to discharge them into a field and that's mostly sodium bicarbonate, so it's not harmful, but it, it, pressurized tanks are not received very well at the recycling place.
So you don't want them?
If, if you notice some of the big fires we've had in recycling places, they don't like pressurized tanks of any kind. Um, no, we do not want them, um, it's just like explosives, please don't bring them to your local fire department, that's the bomb squad's problem. But, uh, there are times when people have tried to dispose of chemicals and that, they think they bring them to us and that is not. You can call us and we will help find the proper people to eliminate you of that responsibility. But the reality is, if you've got something that needs to be removed like that, it has to go through the proper waste management and Lloyd may be able to speak better to that than I.
Okay. Cause there, on social media, there was...
We'll find out the answer for you.
Yeah, there was some question as to whether or not they could be put in the recycle bin, whether SACRA, which they get...
And they're only good for about five years and the tanks have to be retested or they have to be discharged and disposed of, so everyone knows your fire extinguishers don't last forever.
To, to clarify, by discharge, you meant it go to the backyard and let it rip?
Yeah, but I'd be cautious, I do that if you don't want to cover your neighbor's flowers and everything with, uh, sodium bicarb.
Or enjoy the uncomfortable ride.
Five years, that's a...
Enjoy the uncomfortable ride.
Yeah, if, we, we...
Mine is older than that.
We have ours tested regularly, but that's what all the, uh, extinguisher tags in every building, public or private, is to say that those were inspected and that if it's up to its testing date, it has to be taken out of service and tested and put back into service after it's recharged or it has to be disposed of and a new one put into place. Because of the cost in today's society, I hate to say, that on the recycling end of the stick, fire extinguishers tend to be thrown away and they buy a new one because of the cost of testing and recharging them.
So to answer your question, we're going to get you that information and provide that to, uh, our website as well as at the next meeting. Um, he just actually brought up more questions than needed your answers, so we'll get that figured out.
I'm good. I also have the test calendar, if anyone like it, for the sirens, that'll start, because we're coming into March and windy weather comes with March.
Would council, do you want a report on this report you just received? Are you comfortable with the data you have or do you want anything else done with that?
I'm comfortable reading it, but I think, uh, overview would be nice for the folks at home.
Okay. You can do a very condensed version. Okay.
And speaks to the quality of work you all do, so I think if we...
We can provide that.
You have to go page by page, but throw a couple slides together so Joe should...
Yeah, I just wanted to get it to the elected body, uh, we are gonna, we will post it on the Fire Department site and that, but this is the first generation of data after everyone got pure data in. If you notice, there's only six comparables, not seven, because one of them had, uh, electronic issues with the conversion of data to the, uh, data research company, so theirs isn't in yet, others will be in on the next term.
We'll provide that one of the next council meetings, thank you.
Good stuff, thanks chief. Uh, Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
Mr. Mayor and council, next Monday the fifteenth is President's Day and curbside refuse pickup will not be delayed, so just want to get that message out to the public.
Will not be delayed.
Will not be delayed.
Pick up on President's Day. Pick it up on President's Day, gotcha. All right, Joe, anything from your office this evening?
Honored lady, no, we also do not enforce parking on Monday, President's Day, so, uh, enjoy free parking on Monday.
You know what I'm going to ask?
Are we going to sign it?
You got signs up?
We are, we're actually, that's part of a bigger picture, we're working on a bigger communications package with, which that is included.
No, that's cool, I don't care if they run off the Xerox in plastic, but we should put something up that says, "Don't feed the meter today."
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Kara, anything from the Communications and Community Engagement this evening?
Nothing from me this evening.
All right. Marnie, anything from the City Clerk's office?
Yes, thank you. I would like to just clarify a little bit about the upcoming election on March eighth. We are getting lots of absentee applications that are incomplete, uh, people kind of forget because it's only once every four years, but this is a closed primary, which means that the applicants have to request either a Democratic or Republican ballot when they make their application. So, uh, my office has been sending out hundreds of letters to folks who have sent in their application without that selection, which is quite clearly marked, because they're just confused about the process, because we don't have to register with the political party, they don't realize that they need to request a particular type of ballot to receive one for this election. And that will be the case also when, um, you're voting in the precincts, so, uh, just a heads up that that's what's required to vote in the primary, presidential primary election. Um, other than that, we have, we have sent out seven hundred and seventy-five absentee ballots already for the, uh, primary election and we had a stack like this of registrations today for new voters, as was the close of registration for the March eighth election. So, we are hopeful that there's going to be a pretty good turnout, so, that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Anything for the City Manager's office?
Uh, just a friendly reminder that City Hall is closed on Monday in observance of President's Day and will reopen again on Tuesday at eight o'clock.
Dan, anything else?
Uh, just one item, uh, I, most of council's probably aware, but the audience might not, the Public Act two sixty-nine, which was issued, uh, there is a federal judge, John O'Meara, issued a preliminary injunction, uh, deter- on a preliminary basis, finding that it may be unconstitutional, so, uh, that particular act, as council knows, would bar, uh, government officials from talking about, uh, factual statements regarding upcoming elections, uh, within sixty days of an election. So that's on hold right now, uh, while, and, and being reviewed by, uh, federal judge O'Meara.
Good, thank you. Uh, Councilman Martin?
Uh, yeah, one thing, I'm, uh, once again, working with Citizens for Fair Ferndale, it is the annual Good Neighbors Award. What is a good neighbor, you ask? It's any person, couple, or family, business, or group who is connected to the community, uh, through residency, business, or school district, or any other affiliation, who's demonstrated the mission of CFF through their actions. Award winners should be inclusive, tolerant, and reach out to others in a variety of ways to bridge the gap between people, cultures, and ideas. Also keep in mind that we recognize those activities that are volunteer in nature as deposed, as opposed to those that are considered part of the person's job description. If you would like to nominate someone or a group of someones for the Good Neighbors Awards for twenty sixteen, the deadline is March first, so it's approaching, and you can find an application at www.fairferndale.org. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Lees May?
Uh, nothing tonight, at least I can't remember what I was going to say, so, so nothing. Okay.
All right, Councilman Polika?
Um, I actually have a question for, um, our city clerk, clarification, today was the last day to register to vote in the March eighth election, when is the last day that someone could request an absentee ballot?
We're required by law to be open on the Saturday prior to the election, which I believe may be the fifth, but we will be in the office on, um, that Saturday, which, let me just verify, yeah, Saturday, May fifth, we'll be in the office from nine to two, that last, that's the last day we can mail an application, people can still vote...
But March, you mean? You said May.
Yes, I did mean March, thank you. Um, people can still vote on the Monday prior to the election, but they can only do it until four PM and they have to do it in City Hall, they can't leave with the ballot.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Polika, Piana?
You almost said Polika.
Yeah, a couple things, I just wanted to say thank you to our city staff for putting on a really great public meeting for our master land use plan on Saturday at the Rust Belt, and thanks to the Rust Belt for hosting it for us, I think it was a fabulous venue, to get more people who were in shopping and getting coffee to stop by and talk about what they thought Ferndale, how Ferndale should grow. I thought it was really well done, and fit the community character with the emoji stickers. I also wanted to say thanks to Krista Johnston for hosting another clothing swap at The Loving Touch on Saturday, it's a fundraiser for our Ferndale PTA, and not only do you get to get rid of things out of your closet, you can grab things from other people's closet. So, it was a lot of fun just hanging out and talking to new Ferndale residents. And then tomorrow night, just want to announce that there is another fundraiser to support women who may be in shelters or homeless, and it's called the Ferndale Marty Bra, if you bring in new bras, and underwear, socks for women, and feminine products, they're collecting those, and that is also, I believe, is it The Loving Touch?
Loving Touch.
At The Loving Touch, as well, so that starts tomorrow night at 6:00. And then finally, when you are the representative to SEMCOG as the city council liaison, you get the opportunity to sit on task forces, and last year I had the opportunity to sit on a task force put together by a Washtenaw County Commissioner in, obviously, Washtenaw area, to sit on something called Access to Core Services, and this task force looked at how accessible our region is in terms of transportation, but accessible in the terms of fixed route transit, jobs, healthcare facilities, supermarkets, parks, schools, and libraries. So, I attended four meetings last year, and put input, or gave input as part of this committee, and they produced their final report, and I believe everybody on council got a copy in the mail, I did, but if not, you can go to SEMCOG, and on the homepage it says Access to Core Services, and Ferndale is featured on the cover of the report with a picture of Western Market and their bike parking and a smart bus going by. So, I think they see Ferndale as a connected, accessible place, and so they keep using us as an example. But anyway, go look at the report, I think it has lots of great things for the region to think about in terms of how we're going to improve getting people where they need to go, especially to food and healthcare, not just jobs. That's it.
Excellent, and I just have one thing this evening, I had the opportunity as a member of the DDA to sit through two evenings of the DDA planning session this year, and I know a number of you were also there. Really exciting changes and planning underway at that organization, I'm really excited about Barry and the job that he's doing over there to really focus our Downtown Development Authority on the most crucial and important things that they should be concentrating on. There was some really good and honest feedback and discussion at those meetings, and I left with a very optimistic sense that we're going to see even additional progress from our DDA, and I just want to encourage folks, because Barry is a very accessible guy, and Cindy as well at the DDA, that if you have thoughts or ideas about what you would like to see in our downtown, or what you don't want to see in our downtown, or what your vision is for what our central business district looks like, pick up the phone or send an email to the folks at the DDA, because they're, not only are they open to it, but this is a good time to add that input, because it's the planning time for the rest of the year, so this would be a great time to share your thoughts and opinions with the DDA. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.